Had to bring that big book, didn't you?
Good morning, welcome to the Tulare County Planning Commission May 11th meeting. Roll call, please. Gong.
Here.
Millies.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
Diaz.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Emiliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Here.
Please join me for the political allegiance.
My pleasure to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested persons have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. In order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes of April?
Madam Chair, you've opened for public comment, may I speak?
Over there.
On any non-agenda items.
Good morning, Richard Harriman, representing the Dinuba Citizens for Responsible Planning, and Roger Westatsky. We're on your agenda this morning for item number six, and I understand that I am not to present testimony on that at this time, but I would ask through the Chair, a procedural question, because it's my understanding that the public hearing was closed on this matter before and will not be allowed to appear. So if we're not going to be allowed to appear, I simply wanted to make a comment that we are very concerned that this matter should probably go to peer review, based on the fact, similar to your sand and gravel mining operations, that the applicant has applied for the entitlements pursuant to our settlement agreement. The county staff has done the lion's share of the work being paid by the applicant. There's been no evidence in their record that the applicant has a consultant representing them. And so we think, when you look at the body of the material that you have there, if you've read it all, and God help you if you have, that we really would be well advised to have this subject to peer review, and that would be the comment I would make in case we can't comment at that time. Anything else?
I just wanted to make the comment that I would recommend that we do allow public testimony for item number six, but only on, if you have new things to say, and a strict three-minute time limit.
And that would be at the time that we-
At the time that we address item six, yes.
Sir, if you have some new information on this, when we bring the continued matter up, the Richard Best Transfer Incorporated, then you would be able to give your testimony.
Yeah, I'm just not commenting on contribution to that specifically, except that I have received a large number of documents, 914 pages, and I received some of them 16 days ago, and some of them 12 days ago. And for all that quantity of information, I need more time to analyze them and make comment. So I'm just requesting that we be given more time to make comment after reviewing these documents.
Thank you very much.
So if they want to consider that on the program later, that can be factored in then.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we will go back to approval of the minutes of April 27th. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, we approve that minute.
I'll second the motion.
The vote, please. Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Emiliano.
Yes.
Aguilar. On parcel map public hearings, action on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing, unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of these items requests that it be pulled for a separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on each item. Do we have any comment?
As the Chair, as a point of clarification, on item 4B, we'd like to change the first name of Mary to Martha, and that completes the point of clarification.
Thank you. No other, okay. Then we'll begin with 4A, tentative parcel map number PPM 16-001, Jean S. Jones, co-trustee, and Sarah K. Hart, co-trustee, Forrester, Weber, and Associates. This is for categorical, I'll never say that, categorical exemption and tentative parcel map number PPM 16-001, to divide one 39.18 acre parcel, Section 40, into two parcels. Parcel one will be 1.89 acres, and parcel two 37.29 acres, in the AE 40 Exclusive Agriculture 40-acre Minimum Zone. The site is located on the south side of Avenue 320, approximately 1,250 feet east of Road 138, north of Isaya, and the contact is Francis Torotto.
There's no presentation, so.
Okay.
Do you open up public comments for any of these items?
That was done earlier.
Yes.
It opened up.
Yes.
So it's to us here at this point.
Does anybody have-
If there's no comments, I'll make a motion. May I?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Sorry.
I'd move to approve a categorical exemption consistent with SEQA pertaining to minor land divisions in urbanized areas, approve the exemption pertaining to the waiver of a final map within urban area boundary, and conditionally approve tentative parcel map PPM 16-001, and waiver of the final map. I'll second that.
Thank you, could we have the vote? Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Emiliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you. Item 4B is tentative parcel map number PPM 16-003, Martha Jane Hall with Neil Zerling Land Surveyor Incorporated. This is a categorical exemption and tentative parcel map number PPM 16-003, to divide one 19.40 acre parcel, sectional 20, into two parcels. Parcel one, 1.45 acres, and parcel two, 17.93 acres, in the AE 20 Exclusive Agriculture 20-acre Minimum Zone. The site is located on the north side of Avenue 400, State Highway 201, east side of Road 68, south of Dinuba, and the contact, again, is Francis Torotto, which we do not have a presentation. Do we have a motion, or any comments from the commission?
I'll make a motion. That we approve categorical exemption consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, and the state SEQA guidelines pursuant to Title 14, Cal Code Regulation Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approve tentative parcel map number PPM 16-003, and waiver of the final map. I'll second.
May we have the vote? Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Emiliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you. Number 5A is a special use permit, number PSP 16-001, Fresno M.S.A.L.P., doing business as Verizon Wireless, Ryan Beaumont, care of SAC Wireless. This is a categorical exemption and special use permit, number PSP 16-001, to allow a new telecommunications facility with 125-foot-high self-supporting tower on a 2,500-square-foot portion of an 18.97 acre parcel in the AE 20 Exclusive Agriculture 40-acre Minimum Zone. The site is located on the northeast corner of Avenue 50 and Road 40 near Alpa, and our contact is April Hill.
Good morning, Chairman Petiglio and Commissioners. I'm April Hill, Planner 3 in County's Funding and Project Processing Division. Subject site is southeast of the Alpa Urban Development Boundary, and about four miles west of State Highway 43. Regarding the general plan, the subject site is subject to the World Valley Lands Plan, which designates it for valley agriculture. Proposed project will not conflict with commercial ag, and the property owner is required to sign a right decorum notice. Project is consistent with relevant policies of the general plan. Subject site in the AE 40 Zone, and the Tulare County zoning ordinance allows radio, microwave, television towers, towers over 75 are required to have an approved special use permit, consistent with the zoning regulations. Here's an aerial of the property showing agriculture and scattered rural residences. The nearest off-site residence is about 100 feet west of the tower, and the noise generated will have a minimal effect. Facility site currently contains row crops, and otherwise is undeveloped. The California Natural Diversity Database shows no species of concern in the area. An Alpa irrigation district runs along the eastern boundary, about 500 feet distant, and railroad tracks run along the north. It's not in an ag reserve. Here's some photo simulations of the proposed 125-foot-tall self-supporting lattice tower and the telecommunications equipment. There's one cell tower existing within five miles of the site, and options for co-location are limited. Here's the first page of the site plan, which will be within a 50-by-50-foot lease area. It'll be about 59 feet to the edge of Road 40, McNeely Road, and about 120 feet south of a dirt road by the railroad tracks. Road 40 has a 12-foot-wide pavement and is a minor road, not much traffic, not a collectorial or arterial road. The tower will be engineered and has a very stable lattice structure. Facility will also have 12 panel antennas, a GPS antenna, standby generator with a diesel tank, two microwave antennas, electrical equipment and cables, surrounded by an eight-foot-tall chain-link fence topped with barbed wire. The applicant proposes a 12-foot-wide access and utility easement. Wireless communications facility will comply with regulations and standards of the Federal Aviation Administration, the Federal Communications Commission, and the American National Standards The applicant does not plan to place a temporary facility before the permanent tower and equipment are installed, and the draft resolution will be revised to delete description of the temporary equipment, which was on Page 2, and a related condition of approval, which is number 31 at the very end. A public notice for the project was mailed to surrounding property owners and published in the Isaya Times Delta with a 10-day comment period. We had no comments received. And this ends staff's report. The agent, Mr. Beaumont, from SAC Wireless, is available to answer any questions if you have them.
I was wondering, do we, I didn't notice it in the material you gave us on the project, but do we have an aesthetic component on this one?
No, it's a categorically exempt, and in the notice of exemption, we talk about how the structures are comparable to other structures in the ag lands surrounding.
Like, I mean, we've done that in so many others, I'm just wondering why we're not doing that in this one.
Chairman, if I may, the location of this one, it would draw more attention if it was a giant tree than it does as just the utility thing. That's why in this case, we weren't recommending to camouflage it, so to speak.
So what, so that's because of the landscape in Alpa is, is what? Is there anything planted around there?
Here's the photo simulation of existing and proposed, and here's another view of
Kind of prefer to get away from that metal look.
You know, John, it kind of fits in there probably a little better, because just, what about, less than a mile or two to the east is the big high-tension line that goes through there. The towers look just like that. Is that about right, Mike?
I'll defer to April, because I haven't. But you're right, the PG&E grid line goes right near there.
You have trees out there, though, right?
On the neighboring property, on the residence across the street.
I will just add in, but that would look like a giant redwood out in the middle of the field instead of a tree.
125 feet, who would?
Who did?
Oh, geez.
That's all field crops around there, right?
Yeah.
What about an American flag? I don't know, I just, I just think, you know, we've established a precedent in other places, and we shouldn't give one a pass, just because somehow it's going to stand out. It's still going to look better in wire, but, you know, I'll entertain other ideas on it. Doesn't make sense to me if we're doing it on another.
Comments here. Any other comments by the commission before I open the public hearing? Okay, we will now open the public hearing. Are there any comments by the applicant, or anyone else that would like to step up now and make comments? Okay. Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. And do I have a vote?
Make a motion, make a motion that we approve categorical exemption consistent with SEQA and state SEQA guidelines per Title 14, Section 15303, Class 3, pertaining to construction and location of a limited number of new small structures, and conditionally approve special use permit PSP 16-001.
May we?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. May we have the vote? Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
No.
Diaz.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Emiliano.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you.
That was the moment we've been all waiting for.
Item number six, which is a continued matter, the final site plan number PSR 14-005, Richard Best Transfer Incorporated, Wyatt E. Best. This is a final site plan, PSR 14-005, for Richard Best Transfer Incorporated, RBT, with an addendum to a previously adopted negative declaration to allow improvements, the construction of a hard car unloader and commodities barn, to increase efficiencies at an existing freight forwarding facility. The project includes a master plan, site, a master site plan for the Port of Ivory LLC, POI, an updated RBT operational statement, and a landscape plan, which were required as terms of the 2012 settlement agreement between POI, RBT, and Dinuba Citizens for Responsible Planning, located in the M2SR Heavy Manufacturing Site Review Combining Zone at 6801 Avenue 430, Reedley, California, on the south side of Avenue 430 between Road 68 and Road 72, approximately 1,000 feet west of the Dinuba City limits. The matter was continued from September 23rd, 2015, October 14th, 2015, and November 18th, 2015, January 27th, 2016, February 24th, 2016, and April 13th, 2016. Our contact would be Aaron Brock, and would you like to give the presentation?
Yes, Chairperson Petiglio. Commissioners, I am Aaron Brock, Chief Planner with Tulare County RMA, and before you today, as stated, is the master site plans for the Port of Ivory Industrial Park and Richard Best Transfer Incorporated. Through the 2012 settlement agreement, by way of background, the RBT facility has been operating on the sites since 2001. The 2012 settlement agreement was in response to noise and dust complaints by the DCRP and Richard Harriman. The agreement required a master site plan with a noise study and a traffic study, which have been completed and are part of the addendum to the ISND. Furthermore, on the settlement agreement, the other requirements were construction of a commodities building, installation of a hard car unloader, and a landscaping plan, which have been presented to this planning commission. As a result of discussions with all parties, RBT plans to develop the site to provide better efficiencies for receiving and releasing rail cars to the San Joaquin Valley Railroad by adding rail spurs that, first of all, allow the longer trains to unload on tracks that are off the main line, and to group emptied rail cars on one track, so that the SJVR may remove them more easily. And that is a result of the latest discussions with the applicant and opposition. In regards to the meetings between the parties, originally on October 9th, 2015, in the first meeting, there was produced an addendum to the settlement agreement. On October 29th, 2015, Joseph Evans, General Manager of the SJVR, came and discussed these issues. Since then, there has been two other meetings with all parties, and as recently as March 30th, 2016, to try to settle any remaining issues. Since then, the Mr. Harriman has filed a lawsuit against the applicant for breach of the settlement agreement. For the record, the final POI master site plan, the RBT operational statement, and the landscaping plan were all mailed to the planning commissioners and all parties on April 22nd, 2016. The Resource Management Agency has made findings and responded to the comments, all comments received during this process. The comments, response to comments, and attachments were mailed to the planning commission and all parties on April 26th, 2015, in order to allow all parties adequate time to evaluate the material. These documents are incorporated by reference to the attached resolution and are available online at the following two locations. So, we're discussing two site plans here, one for the overall Port of Ivory and one for RBT. The one for the overall Port of Ivory is merely part of the settlement agreement and in fulfillment of the settlement agreement. So that includes, as you can see before you, the Port of Ivory headquarters, Marimonte, Greens Best, ALW, Mission Agriculture, and the RBT site plan. That is the overall site plan we are looking to discuss today. So, as to be distinguished from the RBT site plan, which, as we discussed before, Phase 1 of this master site plan includes construction of a rail car side, rail siding spur, excavation of a receiving pit, installation of electric-powered NPK hard car unloader, and an electric-powered drag conveyor, all part of the settlement agreement. And in addition to that, there's the Phase 2 of the master site plan, which is further down the road. It's construction of a free-span commodities barn with a bucket elevator, addition of approximately 1,000 feet of tract by the unloader and the barn to store 15 additional cars and facilitate faster unit train spot and pull times, hence efficiencies. At some time in the future, the applicant plans to enclose the barn, install solar panels on the roof, and install a baghouse to capture dust. The solar panels will power the electric hard car, unloader, and conveyor equipment, none of which can go forward unless this site plan is approved. So with that, I have the following two recommended motions. The first motion is to approve the master site plan for the Port of Ivory and fulfillment of the settlement agreement. And two is the motion to approve the addendum to the adopted negative declaration for zone change, number PZ07-010, and to conditionally approve the final site plan, number PSR 14-005, to increase efficiencies to an existing freight forwarding terminal and a master site plan for the Richard Best Transfer, subject to modifications as discussed. I did want to point out, there are quite a few conditions of approval that have been added. There are limitations, as we discussed, to this project, and all of that is presented in all the packages that we have given more than normal times to review, and we have, in the process, answered all the planning commissioners' questions. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the planning commission.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Brock. As a point of, I'm sure these were mailed on April 26th, 2016, not 2015.
2016, sir, thank you.
As a point of correction. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If I may, I would recommend, planning staff is recommending, that you would allow the applicant and the opposition to make brief statements regarding any new information that they might have, and maybe time limit that to maybe three minutes for new information. And then I would, I'd like to reserve a moment to have a brief summary before your commission considers the matter.
So am I opening the public hearing? In order to do that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for, the attorney brought up the peer review process, can you explain that?
Well, under some circumstances, under SMARA, we have allowed peer review, mostly through some pressure from opposition to do it. It's not a matter of course, so to say. We've brought SMARA projects before you that have not had peer review. On the other hand, in situations, we have done a peer review. To be distinguished by the fact that the work was done by outside consultants in the first place to peer review. In this case, the work that staff has done has been in response mostly to comments, in trying to make clarifications to the planning commission. The operational statement is really in response to what opposition wanted to see, and so that's, that's why that is before you. Also, opposition has had their consultants look at it as well, as far as peer review, if we accept their professional engineering opinion as a peer review of it. All that's documented in the record. I don't believe a peer review would be necessary at this time. Again, it's not typical practice for, for us, but it's all within the planning commission's purview.
And how would a peer review be different than what we have received so far?
Well, again, this would be a first time for us if we were to have a peer review on any of staff's work. Public Works does projects all the time without peer review. So, a case of first impression, we'd have to figure that out if we were to do something like that. I don't know what that would look like. Our operational statement, as we sit here today, is, and this planning commission has seen quite a few operational statements and site plans before, we just try to, again, clarify what's going on on this site, and make sure that everything is adequate so you can review it properly. So, it's probably one of the better operational statements than has been produced here. So, to peer review this would be, it would be interesting. I don't know what that would look like, but it would be hiring outside consultants, basically, to look at that and comment on it.
Aaron, what do you think about, I'm inclined to agree with you on the peer review, but what do you think about the request? And we've really considered the neighbors in this, and we've had them involved in the settlement all along. You think, like, a two-week extension and something would be warranted?
Well, the, and I'll leave this to the sidebar over here as well.
I would not, at this point. I think at this time, I think the work that staff has put into this is sufficient for what the project is, the project being a hard car unloader and a commodity barn. So I feel that, at this point, there's been enough time dedicated, enough resources dedicated, that this, that the commission has sufficient information in front of them to make an informed and decision on the matter. I would recommend that the chair open up the public hearing to allow final comments from each side and then that I'll make a summary statement and then have the planning commission consider the matter. I think that, at this point in time, that there's sufficient evidence in the record that you can make an informed decision.
I agree with the staff's comments about discouraging peer review. We're going to get into an analysis paralysis mode here if we're not careful. So, I think we need to make a decision, make a motion on this and move forward.
I agree with Wayne and I think no matter what decision we make, it's going to go to the next level, so. And we have enough information, this thing's been talked to death, but I'm willing to listen to any new testimony also. My mind is not closed.
Okay, if that's per the commission's discretion, I will open the public hearing now for final site plan number PSR-14-005. If anyone would like to make comments, we welcome you.
Good morning, Mike Slater, on behalf of RBT. My address is 7522 North Colonial Avenue in Fresno. I'm their legal representation. We have nothing new to add at this time. We appreciate staff's time and all the hard work and you can see they've put a lot of time and effort into this. I would like the opportunity to respond if the opposition presents new testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Good morning, Honorable Chairmembers of the Commission, Richard Harriman. I'll be very brief because my time is short. Number one, on the breach of contract suit that we filed, we filed that in order to make sure that we didn't miss the statute of limitations, which are three-year statute of limitations. It has not been served on the opposing party. It is being held during, pending the negotiations. One of the allegations is the failure to do the landscaping pursuant to the first agreement. Other allegations include different issues that aren't relevant for today. Second thing is, the reason that I raised this, and I think planning staff and I, even though we work well together personally, we can agree to disagree professionally. I have, this is a project of first impression in my experience where an applicant, and there is a formal applicant, it's not the county, but the way it's appeared, it is as though the county is moving the project forward for the applicant and serving as the applicant's consultant. They are being paid by the applicant. The applicant has no other planning consultant or engineer that's been working with the county. Mr. Slater's a superb attorney. He does a great job as an attorney. But, your job in the public interest and the public trust is to protect the public's interest in seeing that the provisions of your code and the site plan review process and the other processes are fulfilled in a fair and balanced way. And we really think, in this situation where there's a conflict of interest here, because of the way that this has been prosecuted, all of the materials you have there have largely been done by staff. And so staff is having to present to you in a staff report why they think you should go ahead and approve the project. They're going to be here to defend that recommendation and yet the whole time they've been working for the applicant. We have introduced our objections, but we have, we have a position, we have an interest in this, we're opposed to the project as it's currently constructed. Final point, or currently proposed, we got all of this stuff, starting in August, we finally got all of it about two weeks ago. And you got the same amount. And I challenge each of you to ask yourselves in your heart and in your integrity, have you read all of the documentation that's been provided to you? How do you do, how do you make a judgment? You're going to do it on the staff report. So we really need to have a third party come in here who is not biased, who's not paid by us, who is paid through the county, by the applicant, to have an objective third-party argument, because we think this one is biased. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Any other comments?
My name is John Ennis. Business address is 735 West Laveville, Fresno. I am the consulting engineer to Mr. Wazdowski. I'm trying to play middle ground here a little bit because I try to stay even keel with understanding the needs of staff, the needs of business, as well as the issues faced by Mr. Wazdowski. What I'm having difficulty with is there's a lawsuit settlement here that there is the intent to apply a standard of care for a master site plan, master site plan review. And what I think was being expected was to follow Section 162 county requirements of site plan review. And I'm going to just read briefly. "The purpose of this section is to enable the county to make a finding that proposed development is in conformity with the provisions of this ordinance and the goals and objectives of the general plan. Site plan review process is further intended to provide a means whereby the planning department, public works, building department, public health, fire warden's office may establish consistent uniform requirements of development projects." And as I go through the master site plan, for me, there's some elements that are missing that perhaps the intent of the lawsuit settlement was to make a more formal site plan review go. I made comments to that and the response back was, "Well, we can't re, you know, really apply those standards of care because it's an existing condition. It goes all the way back to the 40s, so therefore we don't need to have a master drainage plan and we don't need to know where the fire hydrants are and things of that nature." And so, that's where the, I think the rub is here a little bit, is the understanding as to what was intended perhaps and what's being delivered are two entirely different things. And so that's what I really wanted to offer today and let you know that's what you're approving, is what's not a full site plan review. It's, it's an existing condition and we're only doing the addenda and the fire marshal really doesn't have a comment at this time, things like that. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention before approval today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I'd like to respond to Mr. Harriman's comments regarding peer review and the use of staff as a consultant. I think I'm kind of surprised by Mr. Harriman's comments because I think he'd have the same comments if we went out and independently hired consultants and worked with them directly. In most cities, staff doesn't have the time or the ability to work with the applicant on such things. I don't think that this is an uncommon situation that staff has worked with us and Mr. Harriman's objections would be the same if we went out and hired a third-party consultant and worked directly with them. Additionally, you know, they've complained about the amount of material that was provided two weeks ago. Well, I would say 90 or 95% of this is all old stuff that the opposition's had an opportunity to review for years. It's mostly just a compilation of the record and the only new material is the updated site plan and the conditions, as far as I can tell. So, it's not like you got 950 pages of new material. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, I'll just remind you, please, Nate, state, oh, sorry, state your name and address.
Yeah, I'm Roger Wazdowski. And I live over there near the site and I want to point out that...
Excuse me, can you give your address?
42481 Road 72. It's a few hundred feet away to the southwest of the site.
Thank you.
And I maybe didn't identify at the earlier statement today, it was probably obvious I was talking concerning PSR14005. And admitted is, there's a lot of progress been made and all these papers, it's really appreciated, all the work that everybody's doing on the situation and it's coming down more to the conclusion of the situation, hopefully pretty soon, that I'm willing to spend more time, if it's done proper, and to the benefit of the community. Now, the main deficiency of this whole thing, at the point we're at now, is the blocking of Road Avenue 424 and like as many as 50 horn blasts for one visit is not being really addressed that much. Where you appreciate getting rid of the noise from the hammering and the thumper machine, we don't really know what's going to happen with the hardcore unloader, how much noise that's going to make. It's kind of like speculative right now. But we'll have to see what happens. But we know that the Federal Railroad Administration and the San Joaquin Valley Railroad, they give very low priority to worrying about blocking the road and blowing their horns over there. So, it's my analysis that it's up to the, it's kind of like the obligation of whoever's working with the county and the planning commission to implement a program where I think that the project owners do have enough financial means and so forth and capability to alter their train circulation on the site so that they quit going back and forth across 424 like they've been doing. And the way it's going to end up now, it looks like that aspect of it is going to continue, pending how much pressure they might feel to do that alteration. So, that pretty well concludes what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Richard Harriman, Mr. Wazdowski misstated the location of his property. It's to the southeast of the project and I just wanted to correct the record to that effect.
Yeah, that is correct.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments at this time? And now would you like to?
Thank you. I would just like to state that we appreciate all the effort, all the parties have put in. There's been, this very been much time and resources dedicated to working this project. Again, this was a result of a settlement agreement. The issues at hand, the project per se, is, and what triggers the requirement on the county side, because we're not a party to the settlement agreement, this is, what triggers the project, the final site plan for your consideration, is the requirement that you have to have a final site plan for the building permits. Building permits in this case are for the installation of a hard car unloader and for, and eventually in another phase of the development, the commodity barn. Those both, those items were specifically identified in the settlement agreement to be done, so this is the applicant's, I guess, best effort to comply with those conditions in the settlement. So, just to know that that's the project. The project isn't talking about the rails, isn't talking about the other. The other requirement, and we did as a, at the request of the applicant, the master site plan for the Port of Ivory. This is an existing facility. As such, there was no county requirement for any, any work to be done as far as the master site plan for this. So what we did, and that's why it's not considered a project, but we have it identified and identified what the existing conditions are out there. Those businesses have been established for many, many years. They're an ongoing interest. And what we've done is, we've identified locations of buildings, we've identified some basic operational statements for those companies. We haven't gone any farther than that because really there is no need on the county ordinance to do that, because there's no project, no proposal, there's no, nothing for the master site plan of the whole facility. As far as the final site plan for the Richard Best, that is the project and what triggered that for our county regulations is the building permit issue. I know that the, we talked about the Section 16.2 was brought up by their consultant. Well, all of those, all of those entities that are identified as far as allowing planning, public works, building, the health department, the fire office, they're all consulted on this matter and if, if the fire department is satisfied with, with existing conditions out there, there's, there's nothing that we're going to force another agency to do more. They're satisfied with what the existing conditions are. I do believe that the fire hydrants are identified in the site plan, just to clarify that. Then, as far as the crossing, a lot of the discussion's been to the crossing, which really isn't part of this project. If you were to deny this project, the final site plan today, the operations would continue going forward as they have in the past. This is not part of that. So the impact of the road crossing, while everybody's concerned with that and we've taken many steps to deal with the railroad company to try to see what can be accommodated and the county is, is open to being supportive of any type of quiet zone or anything that could be maybe done in the future. We actually had our engineering staff, one proposal was talking about an overpass. Again, we, and that's including your pack of the design and the cost estimate is just for, for the amount of traffic there, the warrants don't meet for that type of expense. I believe it was over $10 million. It would have been taking some of the neighbors' property, some of the houses would have had it been taken as part of that overpass, so that's not really solving the problem either. And then, as far as the sound goes, the, these are safety issues that, that are federal regulations around, as far as the horn crossings and the bells with the, with the crossing that are not in the control of the county whatsoever, not part of this project, and they're exempt by statute from SEQA for the safety, the safety, the blowing of the horns is a safety, is a safety matter that's required and it's exempt from SEQA. The other, the other factor as far as the volume of this, I think sometimes there had been some consideration that, oh, the project's going to expand. Well, the project is, we put a volume condition on this of 550,000 tons annually. This is for the permit that the applicant went through with the Air District. They did their own SEQA analysis, determined it was category exempt because of the zoning is proper for this type of business. And so they're capped at what, what was 550,000 ton, which is almost what they approached in 2015. Now, subsequent to that, as everybody knows, the dairy industry and the majority of this goes for feed, up and down, so thus far this year is significantly less, but it's capped at that 550, so it will not exceed what we saw in 2015. So we're at the cap as far as that goes. As far as the bias, I don't believe that there's bias here at all as far as the staff's reporting. We used outside consultants for the traffic study and for the noise, which is what we do in any case. We're the, we're the responsible agency on this, so it's, it's up to us to make a professional recommendation to your commission. We often, we'll have, and as Aaron had mentioned, the operational statement in the site plan is much more thorough than probably seen on most. You'll, you'll say, "Well, we're going to have this many employees and we're going to work from this time to that time and that's about it." We have over 55 conditions have been placed on this, on this resolution that they're going to have to adhere to. We've, we've limitations of hours for unloading and with, with the workers. We have limitations on, on some of the equipment that they have on their onsite equipment to reduce sound. The commodity barn and the hard car unloader are part of the settlement agreement to help reduce the sound and dust. And so they're, so these, the conditions out there currently will improve once these measures have been built and installed. So, I think, I think that that is basically, oh, as far as the time, I, everybody's had, I believe, everybody's had plenty of time to review these, this information. The documents, yes, there's 900 pages, majority of that is information that's been submitted to us months or a year ago. And what is new is, is being able to organize it in a way and a manner that I think that the commission can review better, the comments in one book, response to comments, so you can go back and forth very easily to see what the staff's comments, response to the comments are. So this is just compiling in an organized manner, but this is an all-new information. This is what's occurred over the course of this project. So with that, I would, I would recommend that your board, or your commission deliberate on this matter and make a decision. Thank you.
Very much. Are there any other comments that need to be made at this time? I'm going to close the public testimony. Thank you very much. Are there any, anything else our commission wants to say?
Seventeen years I've voted for staff's recommendations, I've voted against them. I think our staff is very fair. They're just there to review what the laws are in respect to our county rules and regulations. And I don't, I don't see that as a conflict. That's just part of your job. That's, and so, I have, I don't see that at all, so.
Yeah, I would share that. I think staff's done...
I think staff's done, done an excellent job. They're not representing anyone. In any business, you outsource and you, you, you get expertise from various sources. They don't have that expertise. They outsource to solve the problem that meets the criteria for the general plan. And that's what we're here. We're, we're here to rule on land use for the, for the population, for the public. We don't take sides. And I take exception to comments to that effect, both for our, for our commission and our staff. So let's put that to bed. We're here to look at the facts as they've been accumulated by various agencies. And that's the end of the discussion.
Is that a motion?
Oh, wait, well.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve.
We have a couple of their comments.
Yes, I still have. I, I would just like to make a comment that I think during this process, we have all been very sympathetic to the concerns of the neighbors, also to the Dinuba citizens for responsible planning. We were challenged about reading all of this information. If you listen to the years that we've been looking at this, we have overly looked at the information in these books and then given to us again, which we appreciate so much, our staff keeping us up to date and, and giving us a profile of the, of all the information on both sides. It was a huge help to me. But yes, the challenge about reading it, we have read it. And I think there's just a time that we all need to move on and either decline or go on with them. And just to let you know, I will remind you, Mr. Whitlich always does this, but I'll take his job this time, that all commission actions on any of the above matters may be appealed to the Board of Supervisors, and any appeal must be filed in writing with the Board of Supervisors within ten days, and an appeal fee is required. John, do you have anything?
Yeah, I wanted to, it seems like we've really mitigated the nuisance elements in this. And I have a question for Hector because I regard him as an expert in this field. Are there any potentially significant environmental impacts in this?
I don't foresee any. Again, the foundation of the analysis began as a response to the settlement, and I think everything that could potentially occur as a result of this project has been identified and discussed and analyzed, and especially, you know, the outside consultants for the noise and the traffic. I mean, that, that's their expertise. We had no say regarding the rail crossing and the bells going off. That was an entirely different matter outside of our purview, and CEQA, it was exempt from CEQA. So I, I can't think of any other type of issue that would come up, Commissioner.
Thank you so much. Now.
I'd like to make a motion, there's two motions here to approve, for the final site plan number PSR fourteen dash double zero five, approve the Port of Ivory Industrial Park Master Site Plan.
I'll second that motion.
Gong?
Yes.
Phillies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitlich?
Yes.
Villano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Second motion is to approve an addendum to an adopted negative declaration for zone change number PZ zero seven dash zero one zero, consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act CEQA and the state CEQA guidelines pursuant to Title fourteen, California Code Regulations Sections one five one six two, one five one six four, and conditionally approve final site plan number PSR fourteen dash double zero five to expand an existing freight forwarding terminal.
Can we have the vote? Oh, I'm sorry, we need a second.
I'll second it.
Now, may we have the vote? Gong?
Yes.
Phillies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitlich?
Yes.
Villano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
And Chair, can I make a comment like always?
Yes, now you may, can make a comment.
Okay. I'm also a member of TCAG, and those who are opposed, those who are for, should go to TCAG because there's, I think it's seven incorporated cities, the county, the railroad, San Joaquin Rail, Caltrans, I don't know, I might be missing somebody, but they're the ones that direct money for roads and problems like this. In this report, there's the beginnings of a plan that shows an overpass. And you can check with our staff, they'll tell you how to get ahold of TCAG, but TCAG is a powerful organization in Tulare County and can be quite helpful to your, your cause.
Thank you for that comment. Thank you. Any others?
Just a thank you to the commission and staff and applicant. We're still working on, thank you.
Thank you so much. Directors report?
Thank you. As we speak, there's a ribbon cutting going on at Deer Creek Bridge down south of Porterville. That, that grand opening of the bridge is today. Successful completion of that. Our bridge program in Public Works is very extensive. As you know, we have over three hundred bridges, I think, in the county. And, and we're going through, the previous one was the Oliver Bridge over the Kings River a year or so ago, and now we've got this one, so we're moving forward on that front. McDonald's down in Early Mart opened a week and a half ago or so. I think there's actually a piece in the paper today, the Times Delta today about it. It was very successful, the, the community has really embraced it. One of the, one of the unique things, and I don't know, maybe I mentioned this to you last time leading up to it, is that, that during the construction phase, residents were actually coming up to the construction workers and, and giving them fruit and drinks and things because they were so, they were so happy and that they were building this project. So that's, that's opened up where, we're talking with a number of other projects that we can't identify yet, they're still confidential, but, but with some expansions of some of our ag businesses in the county. There, we're looking at that, and there's, actually, one thing I can say today is that we're at Foster Farms up in Traver, they're pouring the foundations for their new silo for a organic feed mill, for a chicken feed mill. They're pouring the foundation, it's, it's big time, it's like, I, I called it Hoover's, Hoover Dam style. The thing is, the, the slab is sixty inches deep thick, and it's a seventy by seventy slabs with the rebar, there are, the, the diameter of the rebar is an inch and three quarters. This thing looks like a jail cell that, that, that was there. So they're pouring, they started, I, I don't know if they're completed yet, but they were pouring a, a, a constant pour of a hundred and eighteen cement trucks that were just going to come in, pour and go on. It was, it was anticipated to be about a fourteen to eighteen hour pour. And the reason they're getting that in now is because it takes a month and a half for it to cure before they can start putting the, the other foundation, the steelwork on top of it. So that's going on as we speak as well. That's a, almost a sixteen million dollar project. There's other things in the works up there at, at the Foster Farms facility as well that hopefully we'll, we'll be able to share later this year. So there's a number of, of activity going on. A lot of, a lot of our building permits, we've surplus, we surpassed last year's building permits. At the end of April, we had issued thirty-nine hundred and thirty-nine permits, which topped, exceeded last year's by, I don't know, fifty or sixty permits, and we still have two more months to go in the fiscal year. So we're, we're looking at breaking a record since back in, in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, I think, is the time that we had done close to five thousand permits. So we're approaching, we're approaching that. We might even, we might even beat the top ever, potentially, depends how it goes. Lot of the projects are solar related, for rooftop solar and, and all that, about twenty percent, twenty-five percent almost of all of our building permits are associated somehow with solar, whether it's single-family residents or, or others. The, the large solar projects are underway and, and nearing, nearing completion, I suppose, down there in the, in the South Valley, down south at Decor, connected up to the Vestal projects, or to the Vestal substation. So there's a lot of activity going on right now.
Thank you.
Just real quickly, Hector and I attended a scoping meeting in Three Rivers the other night for their community plan, and I'll let Hector talk more about that. But just on a overall community planning front, we're going to go forward again next year with quite a few community plans. So we're still working on Early Mart and Three Rivers. Those are our main focus, but we'll also probably start working on Poplar and Ivanhoe as well. So next year, like we did last year, there'll be a, a full complement of plans in front of you. And we are also continuing to work on complete streets. That process is still going forward, and we look forward to next year receiving funding from TCAG for that as well. But I'll turn it over to Hector to talk about the scoping meeting in Three Rivers.
Hector Guerra, environmental planner. Thank you, Mr. Hunter Steeler. We did, we had a, a scoping meeting in Three Rivers on Monday. Commissioner Elliot actually attended also. Not a big turnout, but we got, I guess, a steady, the steady group that typically will show up. And all I basically did was introduce how the scoping meeting and notice of preparation process works. There wasn't real lengthy discussion on it because at scoping meetings typically what you do is like, they tell you, please look at that, look at traffic, look at water, look at, you know, biological, and, and I don't have answers typically at these meetings. I will just say, that's being studied, that's going to be analyzed, thank you for your comment. That's all I can typically do. We'll probably put some clarifications if we're asked a question. We have timelines, that kind of stuff, but the community did a really good job, and, and we are addressing many of their concerns. I, I, it was neat. Typically, scoping meetings don't involve communities. You know, we typically will have one that involves agencies who say, Caltrans say, well, you know, it's a mountainous road and we really can't widen it anymore or something, or Calfish Wildlife will tell us about riparian habitats and the river and those kind of things. So it's, but that the community attended and participated, kudos to them, they're on top of it. And they're going to be thoroughly informed because those who attend will automatically receive our notice of availability when the EIR is finally done. That was it. And, and thank you for your nice compliment, Commissioner Elliot, regarding CEQA. We, we do our best to be as objective because even if you have an adverse effect on CEQA, that doesn't necessarily kill a project. You know, if it goes to a level of the next document type, like an EIR, for example, Statement of Overriding Considerations, we do what we can to, to address all the concerns, not looking at a good or a bad, I'm looking at addressing CEQA. So I remain as neutral as I can.
Well, we can remember, I, I'm sure all of us can, when we didn't have someone in your position, and we appreciate your perspective.
If I, if I may, I'd just like to update one other item of, of general, just for, for your, for your information. As we had approved the Lions Club up in Three Rivers, special use permit for allowing use at the rodeo grounds, there's been a number of events that have happened up there subsequent to that. The, the Jazz Fest, Jazz Fest went off to, 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 no, no issues, no complaints, no, no, anything on that. The rodeo, the rodeo, the first night, we had one neighbor say it was a little, it was loud. They made contact with the Lions Club with, with contact there, and, and they, they got it turned down, and the rest of the weekend, apparently there's no issues with that. This last past weekend, we had the, the Earth Jam up there, which, which everybody going into think this would be the biggest challenge of, of all of the events that they have scheduled, you know, currently. There was some concerns about noise as well on the first night, and it, it took a while, and they, and then they got it down to the right level. And then we had one of our staff up there throughout the day on, I think Friday evening and then Sat, most of Saturday, taking readings, monitoring, and then the Lions Club also had readings. And then we went to, to some of the neighbors that were concerned, and, and the readings, while staff was present, didn't exceed the threshold. But there were times on site that, that it peaked up a little bit high. They were able to make some adjustments and get it back down. So I, and, and as far as shut-off times, some of the complaints in the past have been that it runs on until midnight or beyond. Well, I can say that, that, that the shut-off has been right on time across the board. In fact, one time it was shut down a few minutes early even. So the shutting off, I think, is, is settled. I think the, the, what we need to do is work a little bit more on the monitoring because it seems like the solution can be there because after some tweaking, it gets to level and it seems good, and then maybe a few hours later, a different band is on or something, something gets out, and then, and then it's spiked up a little bit, so then we have to make it. So I think the, the key is to work with the Lions Club for, on the monitoring issue. We're going to meet with them shortly and discuss some options. We're going to look at potential, what type of equipment that we could install that would maybe have like a, a signal light, like a, a, like, almost like a traffic signal, a green, yellow, red, that could be up by the key, the, the master board monitor and have these monitors that are out, wireless, reading it, and then they know when it starts getting yellow that it's preaching, and yeah, red, they know they got to turn the, the thing down. So we're looking at options like that that could be affordable but yet functional. So just know that we're, we're working on, I haven't heard other than, we, we talked to the sheriff. The sheriff said that the, the event this last week was, was significantly smoother and better run than the previous year's event for the Earth Jam. So I know we have one commissioner that has personal knowledge, I'm sure.
Well, they, I live two and a half miles from the stage, and I'm up a little bit in the canyon, and of course, the canyon walls reflect everything and bounces off. This is the first year I haven't actually been able to hear the announcer exactly what they're saying. So I know they've done some stuff to mitigate that situation. You still get the music and you can feel the bass sometime and the drumming, but that, I mean, there's a lot of people in Three Rivers that think that's an amenity, so. I mean, it is what it is, but they've actually done a really good job in toning it down a bit.
We've heard way tonight that there's been some incidents at, on the Kings River at Froggy's.
Yeah.
Is that true?
Recently? I haven't heard of any.
That is true because I've received press releases on, on assaults and criminal activity there.
No, that's, that's new, that's new.
Are we still monitoring that property, that permit?
I, I, I believe so, but I, I don't know, because again, it's been off the radar for, for quite a while since I've taken the position I'm at. So I, I haven't heard of anything, so I'll, I'll check into that, I'll talk to code. It was probably, if it was some incident, it was probably reported to the Sheriff's Department, so I haven't, I'm not personally, this is the first I'm learning of it.
Well, that, that watch commander and supervisor that reported us, I noticed that guy retired. So maybe that the new patrol supervisor in that area doesn't know that we're interested in that property, so might be good to check with him.
Okay.
Just a quick comment on RBT. I didn't hear any testimony, I didn't, I wasn't going to bring anything up at the time, but was there any discussion about RBT, just buying the property from the owners that are offended?
Not that I'm aware of. Who knows what's been offered out there through time?
I didn't want to stir up a can of worms here, so I just insane.
Oh, I'm sure that's been one of the considerations.
That would be cheaper than another fast.
Yes, it would be.
So that would have, you know, that's right. I mean, it would have been cheaper than if it's going to get challenged and he's going to go to court on this thing, that's for sure, but anyway.
And if you, the, the design, the preliminary design, when we had engineering draw, the, creating an overpass, actually, part of the design would have to be taking a couple of those houses anyway because of the, the engineering factor.
Mr. Wadiski, you know, he always gives us addresses, he lives in Los Angeles.
Oh, he doesn't, wait a minute, he just said.
Back and forth, he's, he's back and forth. He lives, he, he lives down there.
But he really lives there.
And he's up here and there and back and forth.
Well, this is a vacation home.
Yeah, we haven't closed the meeting.
I know, I don't, I mean, I'm saying for the record, he, he really lives in LA, so.
Oh, he uses his physical dress, is that a dress? Okay, if we have no other comments. Craig Anderson, nothing today? Oh, okay.
Okay.
I'm going.
No, one question.
Oh.
May we leave these for recycle?
Yes.
You know what, we're going to recycle them and we'll use them at the board for the board appeal. How about that? We don't have to reprint them again.
And I was going to mention, I hope Velma's not the one that has to carry all these out to her car today.
These are really nice binders, by the way.
Those are nice binders. Okay, if no other comments or considerations.
Yeah, just leave them, just leave them on the counter.
I'm going to adjourn the meeting of the Tulare County Planning Commission and reconvene on May twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen.